Let me go ahead and officially begin the March 14th meeting of the council for the town of Washington. And I have a motion for an addition to the agenda, which is to add B under Old Business, Post Office Trail Update. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote to approve the amended agenda. Gene?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you. Mayor's report. I have three quick things. I've already had several people come up and exult in having a post office back in town. It's nice that it's open, and they've told me they've had a chance to see people who they haven't seen for a long time. So, a post office truly is a community gathering space, so it's great to have that back in place. I noticed that they installed a light under the portico, and there is a light outside of the loading bay. We're going to get some additional lighting. I'm meeting with the owner on Friday to try to get some additional lighting for the external area for the parking lot, especially right around the entrance, so that if people want to use it at night, there will be lighting available. Thanks to Gene, we've had a couple of meetings of our brochure committee, or task force, or whatever we are, to begin exploring that, and I think we've made some pretty good progress so far. So, thank you, Gene, for pulling that together. And finally, we are beginning the process of getting a comprehensive study of the walkways and sidewalks and trails, both current and planned or envisioned. We have a consultant who was paid for by a grant from the state. It's about a $30,000 to $40,000 grant. And so, we've had some initial conversations, and I've met the particular consultant, and we're working with the Rep. Hack Rapid End Regional Commission on this. So, that should be happening over the next three months, which is very exciting. That's all I have for my report. The next thing that I have, Gail, Ms. Swift, Swift is out of town, out of state, out of the country at this moment, and so, there is no treasures report tonight. But what I do have, what you have in your... No, I know. I just realized I messed that up. I apologize.
That's okay.
Is the bills to be paid. And so, I bring that to your attention. If you have questions, do not ask me, but ask Barbara. Since she is the font of all knowledge. Are there any questions? If not, then I'd like to have a motion to approve the bills to be paid.
I'll make that motion.
All right. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. A roll call vote, or roll call vote to approve? Gene?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Now, since I've been befuddled, I'll go back to the agenda as I was supposed to, and we'll go to the meeting minutes, minutes for the February 14th meeting of the Town Council. Are there any...
I just have one thing down here.
Yeah. Go ahead.
On page four, we have to remove Mr. O'Connell voted yes under the adjournment because he was absent.
All right. Stand, Chair. Thank you for going through those. The very last thing for the adjournment. Would you like to make a motion with that?
I'll make a motion that we approve without change.
All right. I'll go ahead and second. Roll call vote to approve?
Yes.
I will abstain because I was Valentine's.
Enough said.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. The minutes are approved. Now, going back to the right order again, we go to Mr. Krim.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items to report on. One is you just added to your agenda, which is with regard to the trail to the post office that a deed has been drafted for your review tonight. It hasn't been shared anywhere else, so whenever you get to that point on the agenda, I'll talk about that a little bit more. The second thing I wanted to report on is that Ms. Batson and I had a long conversation with regard to the budget, public hearing notice, and the appropriations process. And so, that was very helpful to orient me to what your practice is. A lot of places have moved away from voting on the bills every month to a quarterly or semi-annual or annual appropriation, so that if the money is there to be spent, it doesn't have to come back before this body to have checks cut. It's a lot more convenient for a lot of localities that are dealing, particularly with vendors that have quick turnaround times or discounts for a prompt payment. So, that's something to think about as you look at your processes and procedures.
Does that mean that you basically bank a certain amount of money, or you budgeted a certain amount of money, and then you've authorized that whoever, essentially, I guess, the signatories to go ahead and pay those bills?
Right. So, you appropriate the money. The budget is just a planning tool, of course, but the appropriation is where you actually authorize the money to be spent.
Okay. Good.
And ready to answer any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garrison?
Thank you. The planning report is, zoning administrator's report is in front of you. I don't have much to add to it, but at this point, I can dive into a couple of planning commission items that are related to that, if you'd like.
As long as you don't steal Ms. DeSarno's thunder.
I could possibly do it. She here? Yes, she's here. Okay. Well, let me wait then.
Test.
I don't know.
All right.
Test, one, two. Can you hear that?
How about this? How about this? Is that better? Okay. All right. Let me try this.
There you go.
So, the report itself is in front of you. We have two items, I think, worth mentioning. The first is Rush River Commons. At this point, we have not received a site plan. A number of people have asked me if we've gotten a plan from Rush River Commons to move forward, and we have not gotten that. And then, of course, the other is a final inspection on the post office. So, those are two major items for the zoning administrator side. There have been a flurry of activities as far as permits go, and those are listed on the report. The planning, the other items in your agenda are some samples of meeting dates and cutoff dates for the various boards and commission in town. And over time, they'll be modified, but that's a start for the first part of reviewing the applications and updating the applications for the town. Also included in your package is the information on the comprehensive plan, the proposed ordinance, and an outline of the comprehensive plan goal and objectives. Those are all items that are planning commission-related. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the report that you might have.
Mr. Garrison, when do you expect to receive a site plan on Rush River Commons?
We hadn't talked about a specific date, whenever the engineers are ready to submit it.
And I understand they're submitting it in three steps? Or is that still their idea?
At least, well, at least two that I know of, and primarily, the retaining wall, basically the backbone of the project that goes through the center of the project, would be the first that would be received, because it's integrated with the development of the site and the utilities. Then, the others would follow as they're completed.
So, at this point, we're waiting to get the site plan for the retaining wall?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else?
Yep.
Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Public Works Committee.
First thing is that we now have a new set of doors at the pump house that got completed finally. So, those are nice. Now, we've got a good, secure facility down there. Atrium's been doing some work at the treatment plant. There's a valve that has finally come in, so installing that and getting the controls The sand filter, Gail had contacted me, because it's something that has to be done about every two to three years, and she sent me the quote for the sand filter material, which was pretty extensive. The shipping alone was actually more than the material itself. So, I found a company in Pennsylvania that we went to, got a quote, and the whole job, materials and transportation, was the same price as what the materials were from the other company. So, we saved $7,000 on that.
Gail thinks you were a superstar, just on the basis of that.
We've been using some of the COVID money for water meters. How many did we buy? We've bought like two batches of them?
Yeah. We're up to, yeah, we just actually ordered another 50. By the end of this calendar year, we'll have meters in town. We have enough in stock for about three quarters of the meters.
That's great.
Which has been great, and that includes touchless read system and integrating that with some software that we're carrying for process the bracket.
That's great.
Yeah. And we're going ahead with the replace, even if the meter is working, that's currently installed, we're going to go ahead and replace it with a new meter. Then, we have all of meters basically at the same time window for their installation, and then looking forward in terms of their longevity. So, that's going to be a big help, and I think you were saying to me the other day that some of these meters that are going in are actually paying for themselves already.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's great.
I think that's it.
I think that's it for right now.
Thank you, guys, so much. You know, this system has been fraught with many expenses, and I think all of us are grateful, Joe, for your oversight, and Brad, for all of the work that you've done to research and find less expensive, but still very good quality replacements and things like that. So, I want to thank you both very much, on behalf of all of us in the town. Planning Commission.
Can I ask a question about the meters?
Sure.
Because I was home when the company came and was looking for my meter, and I had to show them where it was, because they were way off. But they said they're putting in digital ones?
Yes. It's what's called a touchless read. Before, you had little dials, and someone had to open it up and actually look.
Yeah.
Now, they have essentially like a wand, and all they do is tap it, and it reads it, and it's then stored in a data file, which then we upload into a spreadsheet, and that moves into the billing system. So, this way, we can kind of reach under a bush if it's growing there and stuff. There have been a few meters that have been very difficult to get access to.
Mine was.
Yeah. And one of the things I've mentioned is that we need to make sure that all the meters are accessible. So, you know, we have to have that ability to find the infrastructure. So, you know, maybe trim in a bush back so that we can always find it in case there's more of an issue with that particular meter. It's the same thing with like with the grinder pots. We always have to have access to them, you know, so that, again, if we have to go in and service them, it's easy, and the guys don't have to climb over obstacles and things like that. But these are state-of-the-art meters.
Yeah, that's great. So, it's not just changing them, it's improving them.
It's actually, it's allowing us to really capture.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Ms. DeSarno, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes. You'll make us holding grumpy.
The Planning Commission worked on recommendations about swimming pools with Mr. Garrison, but besides that, we spent extensive time beginning to look at solar and what's happening across the board. This is just taking a look at it.
Solar panels.
Solar panels, solar shingles. What are the opportunities? What are other antique villages doing? And there's a lot of work being done by two committee members. It's very extensive. So, we don't have any recommendations. We just want to take a look at what's going on as we creep into the 1900s.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the work that the Planning Commission is doing. Taking on the comprehensive plan is a Herculean task, so we are grateful for that. There you go. The Architectural Review Board, I see Mr. Mitchell is not here, nor are there any members here, and there is a report. I attended their January. I attended their last meeting, and they approved with some considerations, a project, two projects, one on Mount Salem and one on Main Street. There was one aspect of the property on Main Street that needed to have some adjustment before the certificate of approval, certificate of approval?
Appropriateness.
Appropriateness, thank you, was issued. Do you have anything more that you want to say? Did I just take away your thunder? Were you going to report for the Architectural Review?
I wasn't going to do a report, but the property on Main Street, and I can't think of the number right offhand, 262, the ARB approved a majority of the renovations proposed to the property, except for a roof section and a fence, and that's going to come back at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, sir. All right. The next is Old Business, and we are doing an update of Mr. Garrison's title, which is an action I understand that needs to be done to put us on the right side of what is appropriate, which is that...
The town has a subdivision ordinance, and somebody needs to administer, that somebody needs to be appointed by a governing body.
I want to take a moment to emphasize that this does not mean that the town is promoting a huge number of subdivisions, which someone in the community came up to me and was terribly afraid that that's what was going to happen. That is not the case at all. Having this is really something that's required, and so, what we're doing is updating your title to being zoning administrator as well as subdivision ordinance or subdivision administrator.
Administrator.
Okay. Subdivision administrator. And, Mr. Krim, we don't, do we need to do anything?
It is an appointment, Your Honor, so you should vote on that. The form of the motion would be to appoint Mr. Garrison as the subdivision administrator for the town.
All right. And I have just made that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Patrick. Is there any discussion, any questions? If not, roll call vote to approve?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Congratulations.
I told Barbara she did not have to update my, the business card.
The business card. The second item, Ms. Krim alluded to it earlier, thanks to the county, the Board of Supervisors, we, they are willing to have the path go across their property behind the office buildings and between the parking lot behind the office buildings in town and the Avon Hall Pond in order for us to get our trail in. So, we want to thank you all for considering that, and what we wanted to do is to provide some kind of document that allowed the county to feel comfortable and that by granting us an easement, that would allow the county to feel safer making this arrangement. And I'm fumbling along, so I'm going to defer to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, you have a copy of the deed of easement that I've drafted. It has some blanks on the first two pages, because I don't have the deed book and page number information. Also, don't have a sketch to be recorded with the deed. What I recommend is that we have a sketch prepared in recordable form that would then pair up with this deed that shows the approximate location of the easement, and then, as provided in the document, we would actually field-locate the trail based on conditions found there and declare by the terms of this deed that the easement is actually wherever the trail is, you know, 10 feet on either side of the center line. So, it's, that's the way it's drafted. You know, there's nothing magical about that. That can be changed. One of the issues that did come up is that there's a prospect of a building being built where the trail might be to begin with, and so, there's no date set for that. So, I just crafted a provision that provides for notice to be given, and the parties would work out where the trail would be moved to if the county ever needs to take up part of the easement with a new building. Because this is a recreational trail, at least in part, it is possible for the town to indemnify the county, and so, I've added that provision in here pursuant to state code. That means that if somebody is injured on the trail, that the town would be, the town insurance company would be the one, insurance company that's defending you and defending the county as well. Now, the county, of course, has sovereign immunity for right now. The law might change at some point in the future that to take away the county's sovereign immunity, the General Assembly has talked about that a number of times. So, you know, they will want to have this provision, even though right now, they don't have any liability exposure. So, those are the main points of this easement. You know, we're going to just, we need to get the sketch done, and then, we can send it over to the county if it's agreeable to the town in this draft format, and then get the sketch later, or however you want to proceed.
Okay. So, the main purpose of this is to provide protection to the county?
It does. It does. It ensures that they don't have any maintenance responsibilities, which is one thing that they had mentioned. It ensures that they don't have any liability exposure, that it's all on the town, and that if they need to move the easement for construction of a new building, that we will do that.
Okay. Good. It is really for information tonight. There's no action that needs to be taken. So, thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir. Depending on what your timeframe is, you know, you might want to share that with the county at this point. Is that the direction that you want me to do?
Yeah.
Send it with Mr.?
In fact, we have several members of the board here, and Ms. Donahue will be getting this to you. Mr. Krim's been meeting with Mr. Goff to craft this. So, all right. Well, thank you for willing to allow us to do this.
Yeah.
Some things are easier than others. All right. So, I'm in a conundrum, because I know we have people in the audience who are here to see the budget, but I also have members of the staff who need to be here not for the budget, but just for the closed session. So, I think what we're going to do is we're going to move the budget to after the closed I don't anticipate that the closed session will be very long, and so, what I am proposing is that we do the budget after the closed session. That way, we can allow Mr. Krim and Mr. Garrison to leave. But before we get to that point, what I'd love to get feedback from members of the council.
Inconvenience the public too.
Hmm?
I said my only view is that I don't want to inconvenience the public.
How long do you think the budget discussion should go?
Ends. No, since it's the first run-through, it'll only, it'd be very brief, just touching on highlights of things and asking folks for input on where they want to see an, you know, an adjustment.
Well, since we already have it on the agenda, and we've approved the agenda as is, Mr. Krim, I'm going to beg to have you stay through the facts and figures for a little bit.
That's perfectly fine, sir.
So, I apologize.
No worries.
All right. Well, let's go ahead then and go with the budget. And there should be copies out there for everyone.
Barbara, did you need a microphone?
Mr. Garrison, if you want to depart, you can. If you want to stay for this and stay for the public forum, you can, or if you want to get the heck out of here, you may.
I think I'll stay and listen.
Okay. All right, Joe, it's your...
May Barbara walk us through sort of by line where we are, and then what commentary we go.
Hello, all. Welcome to the wonderful budget session. Okay, we'll start with the general. As you know...
Just a reminder to the public, so our budget's divided into, I get asked about this every day, budget's divided into three. The budget is divided into three independent accounting measures. There's the town budget or the general fund. There's the wastewater treatment plant budget, and then, there's the Washington Water Works budget. So, it's divided into three separate, so that's what your three sets of paperwork here are. Apologies for... Unless I chew on it, I can't get any closer.
Unfortunately, that's what you have to do. You have to talk very close.
Yes, apparently.
Okay. Okay, so, starting with the general. If you look under income, it's pretty standard what we've had in previous years. You'll notice that the local sales tax has been less, which I'm assuming is still COVID impacted. So, the estimate is going to be $1,000 less than currently budgeted.
And those are transfers of sales tax, not...
Exactly. Yeah. That's directly from the county. I'm sorry, not the county, the state. Also, something that you will not see on this budget, last year, we had the... Also, something that you will not see on this budget, last year, we had the lottery sales tax. That has gone away. So I forget what it was, like lucky chance, something. So that's no longer on our income. The rest of it, the franchise taxes, the electricity and the phone tax is all stays the same. The grant for the fire department, you'll see that that's at $15,000. Previously, it's always been at 10. And this past year, we did submit it for the $10,000 grant and they gave us 15,000, not us, they gave the fire department. We're just a pass through for this. So I've increased it to 15,000 for this year, anticipating that they'll be offered the same amount of money. But regardless, it's just I get the check and I give the money to them. Okay, and then if we go over to the general expenses. We increased the budget for the advertising, given the number of public hearings we anticipate for the coming year. So you'll see that that's been increased, 3,000. Initially, for this fiscal year, it was $2,000. We've already gone over budget for that. And given the possibility of a couple more public hearings this year for Rush River Commons or other things, that's what the increase there is for. There is a slight increase in our office rent. We had, after the first two years, there's a 3% increase. So that's, you'll see the difference there.
What's the reason for the increase in the dues and subscriptions?
The dues and subscriptions? Oh, the, the previous year was only at $200.
Right.
That, it got confused between that and the dues and subscriptions that were on the wastewater budget. So this is the correct amount.
Consolidating a couple of budget line items.
Yes. So that's the difference there. You'll also see line item under 2,090 for the website. So we were asked to put on the budget the possibility of developing or having a new website built for us, not redeveloping our website. So that's estimated at 10,000.
Is the year-to-date, just a general question, is the year-to-date, is this through February?
That's correct.
So you're basically two-thirds of the year.
Yep. Another March, April, May, June, another four months to go.
And the website is an item that we can talk about more extensively. That was just a marker that Gail put in there. I'm not.
There's a, one of the things that.
The definition of an avoidable expense if we don't.
I don't know exactly, so I'm gonna suggest it now. One of the things that Mr. Guyerson and I were talking about at the Architectural Review Board meeting is it would be nice to have a widescreen video monitor and be able to have an application with architectural drawing, have an electronic version that you could then upload so that the, the public could see the structure. Because right now, at the meeting, they're having this long discussion about these roof angles and so on and so forth, and nobody in the public knew because there weren't, it was expensive to generate all the drawings and stuff for everybody. So, so I don't know. I was thinking that we should look at having something like that installed so that we could use that for the public.
I can definitely do the research to see what that would be. You're talking about basically just, you know, we have a spare laptop that we would be able to use for projection purposes and then a widescreen TV.
Yeah, basically.
I can definitely do that. The other thing that Mr. Guyerson and I were talking about is increasing the number of copies that the applicant is responsible for providing us as far as plans and the application materials that go along with it. Right now, they're required to give us six copies, five for the board and one for the office. Mr. Guyerson would like to start receiving those now because he's involved in every ARB application, so that would take us up to seven. We also thought to then ask eight, which Drew Mitchell didn't think that that was too onerous, and then have a copy for the public at the meeting. And I could also provide a copy of the plans that were submitted to me just for the meeting purposes, and then they'd come back to the office. So that's also another idea.
Okay, I would prefer that the copy that comes to you not leave your office.
Okay.
Just for safety's sake. But that is an option. I just, I think we may also see if there might be some grant funds that could be available to look for that.
Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, we do need to, we should amend our applications to require digital copies. All the drawings now are, that are done by, professionals are done through AutoCAD and it's really fairly simple to transfer those back and forth, so they could be available also.
We, I don't know if we'll ever be as spiffy as the county is with their system, but we'll try to have something to at least look like, as Ms. Tsarno said, to get us out of the 19th century.
And Steve and I had talked about if there, if we make it a requirement that they provide soft copies, that's great because then I can scan the whole packet. And Drew would like those packets to then be available on the website for people to be able to look and download and print at their leisure. So that would all tie in nicely to our trying to get away from paper. So that's.
That would be great.
That's something that we're looking at. But I'll put that on my to-do list to find pricing for you. Did you guys want to have any discussion about the website?
I think we can hold that for.
Okay.
More, again, tonight's more just to put.
Barbara.
Walk through it quickly, see where the highlights are, and then we can go back and talk about it extensively. I'm sorry, Mary Ann.
No, that's okay. Barbara, I have a question. Was there any consideration to put under expenses? I know we've talked about this, a survey, a new survey of the town, is that in here?
Yes, that is in here.
Oh, it is?
Well, we'll get to it in a moment. It's on the next page. You'll see that there was added $2,000 to the beautification line on the budget. We did not have anything last year just due to COVID. So now that will include the decorations for Christmas, or I'm sorry, the holidays and whatever else. And then marketing, the $1,000 that would lend into your bursures that you guys are thinking about doing. And then you have the standard $8,500 pulled over from last year for your charitable donation to the fire department. And then on the next page, Mary Ann, under 6,000, item 6,000 professional, the last line item there, 45 is the town survey. Mr. Guyerson got us a estimate of $30,000 to $40,000, so I've put it in at under 40.
Is this for the boundary? I got 25,000.
A point for us to discuss. A marker for.
And in fact, if we find, we really have only one line that's controversial, and if we can get that one line established and find out, we may even be able to do it for about half that, for about 13.
Barbara, wasn't part of this to update our water system map, our sewer system map and all of that, or was this just for that?
No, this particular thing was just for the survey. The map that you're talking about was taking these eight different maps that we currently have.
Right.
And doing the overlays on it. So that's more of a printing job than a, we don't have any as-built drawings for the system. I'm not going to be able to get as-built drawings, but we'll take what we have and do that overlay system that we have talked about with the map.
Okay.
One new thing that you'll like, you guys had approved for Country Water to do an inspection of all our valves after the challenge we had with the water main break in November in front of Foster Harris House. So they did the inspection. I just have to go and pick it up, the map. We now have a map that has all our valves and any that need repairs and what needs to be repaired. And also on the town map is all the hydrant locations. So that's really great. And that can be part of the map that you're talking about, too.
Good, good.
And we've slated money against repairing the valves.
Yeah, I don't have the estimate for the repairs yet.
One thing I will point out that is likely to change before we go into our next work session is top of the page and under maintenance and repair for town, that's not going to go up. Worst-case scenario. All indications are be significant less than that.
And the only other thing to point out on the general expenses is you'll see that the town attorney and the zoning administration estimates for draft numbers for next year have gone up. And that's with the anticipation of Rush River Commons possibly, BLA possibly, and the level of activity we are seeing on our zoning applications. Any questions for general? Comments, additions?
We have a public forum, but I'm thinking that we should maybe, as we go through each part, should we invite the public to ask any questions that they might have for each section? Does that, no? Okay. Okay, all right, we'll hold off and then just wait till the public forum. All right, water or wastewater? What's next?
We're doing water next. Water is much easier than basic water.
Slightly better picture, anyway.
Yeah. So you will see on the, the income is all self-explanatory, under expenses, asking for another $50,000 to be allocated for meters. And that would close out the, all the meters being upgraded. Not only does it make it easier to integrate with the billing system, this allows us to easily identify if there's leaks in the system, which is one of our main challenges right now, is identifying leaks. And as you already know, our system is quite old and older meters do not favor.
And it goes back to the point, and Jean, the question you raised, I mean, we're fully capturing the amount of processing, which is, is helping with the bottom line in addition to tracking leaks, et cetera.
And I think that's, I don't see anything else. Any other questions for?
From council members? Any other questions about the water budget?
There's nothing for grinder pumps?
That's under wastewater.
Oh, okay.
And all the meter expenses that you're talking about are occurring in this year's budget or in this year's fiscal year?
There's a combination of this year and next year.
Okay. Fiscal year, yes, we're gonna get there, fiscal year. We have a bridge to get both of them taken, or get them all taken here.
Okay, and then under wastewater, the grinder pumps, Jean, are on the second page, I think. Yeah, under line item 5,000, maintenance and repair, we have in this current fiscal year's budget, 3,000, sorry, 30,000, and maintaining that for the next fiscal year. We currently have three new pumps in inventory. We've just ordered four more. And we have four that will go to the shop for estimates for repairs. The challenge that you have with rebuilt meter and pumps is there's no guarantee on how long they'll last. So we're trying to build up our inventory of new meter, new pumps.
We've also asked ESS to study what, what the burnout rate is for the rebuilt pumps and, you know, if it turns out that the ratio there is just not in our favor, then we'll just default to buying new pumps.
The next, the line item above that shows that we've vastly outdone ourselves in terms of actual versus budget. And, and yet, we are not anticipating that again next year. Is that, was this kind of a one-off thing?
Yeah. Those were.
We certainly hope so.
Those were our COVID-related investments. So this is where we've been pouring in the money that we got.
Got you. So it's all set on the, on the other side, on the income side, through ARPA funds or?
Yeah, ARPA funds are covering some of that.
But it was things that needed to get done.
Right, there were things that were on our to-do list that allowed us to go ahead and get out from under.
We know of two other things so far that, that need to be done. As Joe said, the ARPA funds will be covering. We get our next disbursement in July.
And some of these things that have been done at the treatment plant were due to lack of inspections when the plant was built. There are a few things were done wrong.
Oh, I've heard this story. So I just wanted to make sure.
Well, that's what's happened. That's why we've got some of these high numbers, is that the system has run to the point where it stopped running.
Yeah.
We couldn't Band-Aid it, we couldn't, you know, try to jump her through. So things had to be dug up and repaired and replaced. And I'll also say on the grinder pumps, right now, everything is an E1 pump, but we're looking at two other possible suppliers to see if their new pumps will be less expensive than the E1s, and we may try to buy one of those and just, so we can try it and see how well it works.
And then something else I wanted to point out, under line item 5,500 operations, you'll see that you had budgeted $1,000 for the generator maintenance. The generator needs to be repaired this year, which was not anticipated. So that's the difference that you see there.
Why has electricity gone down?
My, where are we at?
It's above generator and maintenance.
Oh, so 12,000 year-to-date, I imagine that's just that month is not rolled into there. We're on track for it being.
Is this, the year-to-date's only tracking until January, so we've got.
But we're anticipating $5,000 less than previously.
No, that, that's, that's not accurate. That should be 30,000. We should be tracking the same as we were approximately last year. And you'll see the contract work estimated, budgeted for 50,000 for this year, 40,000 for next year. That's because a lot of those extra contract hours for ESS have been rolled into the new contract that Brad had negotiated with them. So we won't be paying for as many after-hours.
Yeah.
Any questions about wastewater?
Thing I would note is, unfortunately, if you extrapolate on the math a little bit, we're still, it's still about $100,000 in the red.
Did we?
Even after the ARPA funds?
Did you anticipate any tap fees or anything like that when you did the budget?
Yeah, Gail had put in.
Oh, she put a minimum number in, I remember.
Yes, because we, we just weren't sure what was gonna happen with Rush River. She put in one, let's see, four tap fees for both water and wastewater.
Okay.
Were there any general comments, anything else that you would like to see in the budget?
I have a fourth document which says summary.
Correct, that's all the three budgets rolled in together.
That just consolidates the previous ones. That just consolidates the previous ones. One spot.
And so at this point, the budget is anticipating roughly a $40,000 deficit?
That's correct, but we can make some modifications, for example, to the survey line. This was just the first pass.
Got you. All right. Any other questions?
And just for folks, I'm sorry for dinner, but just for process-wise, we'll schedule a work session in sometime next, in April. Our, at our April regular council meeting, we will schedule a public hearing on the budget.
All right. When do we, do we want to set up that meeting now?
That would be great.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that you have to advertise the public hearing on the budget seven days in advance of the public hearing, and you can't vote on the budget at the same meeting. You have to wait seven days afterwards.
Right.
We can deal with that on the 11th. This is really just the work session that we want to have in between.
Right. So we will, we will get to a point where we will have the public meeting in likely till May, and then we'll vote, I would assume, at the June meeting. That would be the calendar.
Right. Yes.
Yep.
So we'll have a work session. Ms. Krim, I appreciate your cautions.
Keep this on the straight and narrow.
So we're looking at, I assume, a Saturday morning again?
Yeah.
So the 9th or the 16th come to mind? Yeah, the 16th, I think, would work better.
16th's probably the best option, well, at least from my perspective.
And that's the day before Easter. I don't know if that makes a difference.
I don't have to walk very far on Easter, so.
Okay, so.
In my case.
April 16th at, what, 10:00 AM?
Yes. Does that seem amenable, everybody on the left side or the right side from the public's perspective? Yeah, okay. All right, then let's go with April 16th, Saturday, April 16th, from 10:00 to roughly noon, as our budget work session. All right. Anything else in terms of, Barbara, thank you very much for all your work on this show, and Gail, wherever you are in Spain, thank you for all the work that you guys have done on this. And Patrick and Robert, thank you for opening patios. We're grateful. Going back, we will open up now for public forum. If you'd like to speak or have questions, please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself by your name, and whether you're a citizen of the town or the county, until I open up to public. Go ahead. But it would be helpful for those who are not here. Thank you, Sharon.
I'm Sharon Kilpatrick. I've lived in the town since May of 2020. I've lived in the county since '74. I want you to know that there is somebody in town who thinks we need more housing. We need more people, and specifically, we need younger people, families with children. When my children were growing up, this town was full of kids, and it's dead now, mostly all folks like me. So I think we do need more housing, and I'm sorry to see, trying to set a contingency on Ocre that there won't be any more housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sharon.
Is there anybody else from the public like to speak? All right, now we'll go ahead and close the public forum. At this point, we are going to go into closed session. So we will ask everyone to, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Keir. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Ben.